At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Baker?
Present.
Commissioner Bodak? I'm sorry, Commissioner Bodak?
Here.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Present.
Commissioner Granados? Commissioner Granados?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Here.
Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudad?
Here.
Chair, let the record reflect, you have nine Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God, giver of peace and lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his Spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
Budge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, was seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk of the Board, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudad?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all of the communications.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 9th, 2024 executive session?
So moved.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Bodak and was seconded by Vice Chairwoman Leon. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Abstain.
Commissioner Bodak?
Yes.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudad?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, you have eight votes in the affirmative and one vote as an abstention on the minutes of the October 9th, 2024 executive session.
Thank you. Before we open public comment, I would just like to make a statement regarding the Clark Reservoir. Recently, we've received feedback from the New Jersey Turnpike Authority, the NJTA, about the possibility of allowing this access under the Parkway Bridge. The NJTA has made it abundantly clear they are holding Union County fully and entirely responsible for the Parkway Bridge in Clark, not just the underneath passage, but the entire structure above and below. This goes far beyond claims or issues related solely to the waterway. They are insisting that Union County assumes liability for every aspect of the bridge structure. This stance is unreasonable. While we are open to accepting responsibility for the issues that may occur under the bridge pertaining to the waterway, the NJTA's demand for unlimited liability is not only unfair, but also imposes a severe financial risk on Union County taxpayers. This blanket liability exposes the county to the substantial unpredictable costs in the event of any incident, accident, or damage involving the bridge, costs that would be unreasonable to bear. We have communicated this clearly to the NJTA through a letter drafted by our County Council, Bruce Bergen, urging them to reconsider. It does not make sense for us to take on such an extensive responsibility when the bridge is part of their infrastructure. We are calling on them to put our residents first and modify their position to something fair and manageable for Union County. I recommend residents to reach out directly to the NJTA and express their concerns. We are pushing for a fair solution that prioritizes the safety and interests of Union County as a whole. Thank you for your support and continued engagement. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Good evening. Delia Collins, Clark, New Jersey. I had a few questions, and I don't know if you'll answer them, but one you just answered regarding the New Jersey TA. And I attended the Clark Township Meeting and asked if Mr. Oatman had been in touch with the Township Business Administrator, and as far as I know, nothing was discussed. On Sunday, I went to the Headwaters area off of Oak, Old Raritan Road. It is shameful. Take a ride. I don't know how anything can exist in that area of the Headwaters. It is covered in green. It smells. No water moves, and that is the receptacle for all the streams that come in from Westfield, parts of Clark, Scotch Plains. They all go into Headwaters area, and there's no movement. And I know we haven't had any rain, but it is absolutely disgusting. You wouldn't want that in your neighborhood. Regarding the document that we were able to see today, there were some errors in that, and I don't know if that should be brought up at the meeting on November 26th, but I'd like to know where Madison Avenue is in Clark. It's Madison Hill Road. And what portions of Scotch Plains and Westfield are located within the reservoir? My understanding is Clark continues up until the railroad. On the other side of the railroad, that is Westfield and Scotch Plains. From the railroad back to the beginning of the Headwaters, that is Clark. And I visit our town hall often. I've never seen an updated post of the September 4th map that showed the changes. The only way that you could see it is to get onto the Union County site, and that's it. Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners. I'm Anne Marie Howarth of Middlesex County. I am a former RN of Cornerstone Behavioral Health Hospital. I am continuing my duties as the Union President until my duties are completed. I'm here today to continue Part Two of my speech from the September meeting. A couple of nurses had brought it to my attention that the county had not paid us correctly for our holiday pay per our contract. We fought for them to review the payroll for all nurses working and previously employed by the county. I appealed to Claudia Martin, Debbie Ann Anderson, Catherine Hepfield, Karen Dismore, just to name a few, over and over for months, awaiting some type of response. I was finally told by Claudia Martin when I received my official layoff notice in August that they had found the error and it was in review by the Financial Department. It wasn't until my last Labor Management meeting with Administration on October 2nd that I was finally informed by Karen Dismore that we were owed the amount totaling over $60,000 going back to 2019. If we had not voiced these complaints, would we have been paid? Probably not. The institutional aides are still awaiting for their own retro pay to them, which they are continuously fighting for and couldn't be here tonight. Now, I see in the ledger, the day after the county released us, that the state is spending $900,000 of leftover federal COVID-19 funds to retire the medical debt for 77,000 New Jersey residents. What about the healthcare workers who put themselves and their families at risk, and still, some of us got COVID and brought it home? If you Google the topic at hand, you will find that District 6, Burlington and Camden Counties filing for legislature to provide bonuses for certain essential healthcare workers. In short, if the employee's base salary was $100,000 or less, provided hands-on care in the Medicaid program during the vested period of time, the employer shall pay monies not to exceed $3,000 per employee depending on their full-time, part-time, or per diem status. Also, you'll see comments made by the New Jersey Federation of Nurses, sorry, by the New York Federation of Nurses, which are doing the same. What about Union County? The last meeting, you were building a boat ramp where it wasn't needed, and now are you not about to save some money in the next two months due to the closure of Cornerstone, a lease which would have ended, expired this December? We worked very hard during that time of COVID to provide care to the mentally ill who didn't understand what was happening. They witnessed the staff dressed up in PPE like we are being deployed into space. This only made their paranoia worse. They had to be confined to their rooms. Imagine being in a room with two beds, no clock, no TV, no discussion of when you're going to be discharged day after day, and the uncertainty of when will it end? And no, this has nothing to do with our retention bonus, as previously stated, which is in our contract. No one wanted to listen to us during that time, so I will continue to remind you how hard it was, how scary it was to be a frontline worker during COVID. Whoever is listening from tap into New Jersey, you can contact me at sheishylyfavored@gmail.com if you'd like to know more. We're still awaiting our last check, our retention bonus, and our vacation payout, which we are told we are getting on October 30th. And I stayed inside my time this time.
Good evening, Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board, various Golden Nuggets and Bruce. This is Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. REZO 804 gives ClearView Data $46 grand to buy the NIST Fingerprint Management System. The REZO only notes its procurement, so why didn't we just buy it direct and avoid the profit to ClearView? REZO 812 is giving a change order of $850,000 to terminal construction, increasing 15% for their $6.6 million contract for the county parking deck demo. Why is this change order generated since the scope was fully known? Who checks out this huge cost increase? Time and time again, change orders give contractors hidden excessive and unwarranted profits. This one probably funnels $160 grand in free profit at the expense of the taxpayers. REZO 816 and 817, as we saw in the previous video, is giving out $1.1 million in Kids' Recreation and Greening Union County Grants to the county towns. It's a great idea, but these matching-type grants to the towns are considered dollar for dollar where the town has to come up with additional tax monies just to get their own tax money back from the county in the grants. Why can't the county decrease the money match to only 25% match, so taxation doesn't just go up every time you feel generous with our own money, especially around election time? REZO 818 is giving ARD appraisers $3,500 for appraising the Warren Ankle Ice Rink. Why is this being appraised? Is it for insurance purposes? You're not planning to sell it. Please provide the reason to the public. REZO 820 is a grant of $10 million for the Clark Reservoir Project, so thank you very much on that. I'm very disappointed to hear that the New Jersey Turnpike Authority come down, say that the whole bridge is our responsibility. I'll tell you, what's worse than the county level is the state level. I mean, talk about idiocy. But I am asking, who do we reach out to? Because I'm going to write a letter. Is it emails or whatever? Please give us the data there. REZO 821, 822, increasing two election-related contracts to Royal and B&amp;B Press for $90 grand. Last meeting, you were increasing these election-related fundings $300 grand to them. This is another $90 grand, and all within a month of the general election. Why are these sudden costs, and why weren't these costs anticipated upfront to avoid banging the taxpayers? These recent costs apparently funnel an unwarranted excessive hidden profit of at least $75 grand to them. 828, who's the QPA in the county presently? REZO 829 is giving Civic Operations Group $1 million for an outreach. This company originally, I believe, was named MV Strategies, which the state comptroller is looking into for improprieties of ARPA COVID monies back a couple of years. No results have been released to the public. Regular comments, we saw your recent county press release regarding the Clark Reservoir and a change of use being generated. We also saw an executive session last meeting about the reservoir. Since the minutes are being released, maybe you could elaborate? What documents impacted this formal change of use of the reservoir? Was it a master plan, the state, or the DEP zoning regulations? One other question is, what was the original zoning use and what is considered the use now? Since, I don't know if Bibby Taylor is here, but if she is here, and she oversees the LRS A Bio-Solage Project, maybe she can give the public a status report on that project and how it is being impacted by a third-party bio-solage project three blocks away and five times the size. This has been going on since around 2019. The public would like to know, since the county taxpayers are liable for $50 million in bonding costs. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I will... Sorry about that. Seeing no one else, I will close this portion of the meeting and ask Clara Fernandez to respond to 821 and 822.
Yes, good evening. 821 is amending the contract with Royal Printing. This, usually we have, when it comes to vote by mail, we get a request of voters approximately 30 plus 40,000, let's call it. It's the tops that we get. And we had built it into our budget. However, we did not anticipate that as of today, we did have a cushion there, but as of today, instead of 40,000, we have mailed out over 53,000 vote-by-mails applications. So we're running very, very low, and they continue to come in by bucketfuls. We're no longer getting pieces of mail, we're getting buckets of mail asking for this. So that's why we needed it. And also, we are requesting envelopes for a possible special election in January, which we need to request now, we just found out, but we need to request it now because it takes at least eight to perhaps even 10 weeks to get those envelopes in. So we cannot wait to the next meeting to request that. In terms of 822, that was a reprint, a reprint that was needed for several of the ballots. There was an error made at the local level at the time of certification, so those ballots had to be reprinted. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll ask County Manager Oatman to respond to the various other...
Sure, Chair. For number 804, that was the lowest bidder. For 812, there was some additional demolition that was required, but the bigger issue was some more asbestos, excuse me, was found that we did not believe was there, so that increased the cost. For 817, sorry, 818, excuse me, this requirement of DEP because we have assessed the lay-in for building any park lands, so they want to know the value. That's one of their requirements. And the QPA is Laura, she's in the back row. Keep waving, Laura, to Mr. Patterson. That'll be our QPA. I think that answered the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2024-803 through 2024-833.
So moved.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Williams and was seconded by Commissioner Bodak. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye to all, and abstaining on 816 and 817.
Commissioner Dellisford?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye to all, with abstaining on 2024-816, 2024-817.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye to all, abstained on 2024-816 and 817.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye to all.
Commissioner Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Commissioner Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudad?
Aye to all.
Let the record reflect, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all resolutions, with the exception of Resolutions Number 2024-816 and 2024-817, where you have six votes in the affirmative with three abstentions.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to call upon my colleagues for their reports and comments. I will start with Commissioner Bodak.
Our right to vote is one of our fundamental rights here in this country, and I want to remind the residents of the upcoming Election Day on November 5th. Plan your vote, and then choose the option for voting that works best for you. You can vote in person on Election Day. The polls are open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, November 5th. You can vote early in person. Early voting starts this Saturday, October 26th, and runs through November 3rd. The locations of the early voting places in Union County can be found at vote nj.gov. Or you can vote by mail. Apply now at vote nj.gov, and make sure your ballot is postmarked or dropped off by 8:00 p.m. on November 5th. For more information, please visit www ucnj.org/boe.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Commissioner Dellisford?
Thank you, Chair. The Union County Board of County Commissioners is proud to showcase a collection of artworks by students from Community Access Unlimited featured at our Commissioners' Gallery right outside of this meeting room on the sixth floor of the Union County Administration Building here at 10 Elizabeth Town Plaza on Elizabeth. This exhibit is open weekdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. through November 22nd, and it highlights the creativity and talent of CAU's Academy of Continuing Education ACE students. The ACE program offers educational and artistic opportunities for adults with developmental disabilities. For more information about CAU, please visit www.caunj.org, or you can call 908-354-3040. To learn more about Union County Arts Program, contact the Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs at 908-558-2550, or you can email culturalinfo@ucnj.org. And congratulations to the recipients of the 2024 Kids Recreation Trust Grant Program. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mirabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Union County Board of County Commissioners invites all residents to the final household hazardous waste event of 2024 on Sunday, October 27th, from 9:00 to 2:00 at Union County Vocational Campus in Scotch Plains. This free, contactless event offers a safe way to dispose of items like oil-based paint, varnish, propane tanks, pesticides, motor oil, batteries, fluorescent bulbs, and more. The Union County Police will also accept fireworks and ammunition for proper disposal. Car, bike, and motorcycle tires, up to eight per household without rims, will also be accepted. Latex paint is not accepted. Residents can dispose of this by drying and replacing it in the household trash. Proof of Union County residency is required, and for more details, please visit ucnj.org/recycling or call 908-654-9889. Madam Chair, I just have one last comment, and I was asked by Nancy Maltz to make an announcement. This is not from me. This is from Nancy. She said, "Let's go Yankees." I want everybody to be abundantly clear that I didn't say it. I'm just taking care of a friend in the back.
Thank you.
That concludes my comments, as it should.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Very soon, you can discover the wonders of gemstones and natural rocks at Union County's annual Mineral Gem and Jewelry Show at Trailside Nature and Science Center in Mountainside. This family-friendly event on Saturday and Sunday, November 2nd and 3rd, runs from 10:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon. Visitors of all ages are welcome to explore the displays of minerals, rocks, and gems. It's free admission. And for more information, you can go to ucnj.org/trailside or call 908-789-3670. I'd also like to thank all the people who participated in four centuries on a weekend. Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudad and I, and I think maybe a couple other Commissioners, visited some of the sites. I think there's a total of 38 different historical sites in the county, and they're mostly run by volunteers, and this is the one time of the year when everything is open at once. And I got to, between the two days, I visited about a third of the sites, and it's just, it's a great showcase for Union County history. So Cultural and Heritage Affairs staff did a great job of setting everything up, and also thanks to Parks and other county staff who pitched in to help. There was a big crowd at Deserted Village and also pretty busy other places, and I think we all know it was a busy weekend. Every organization seemed to have an event, but everything came through well. And just a quick note to Tri-County Radio Association, who had their event last weekend. They are volunteers who are interested in the ancient art of radio, which shortwave radio, I mean, when there's an emergency, when the electric power is down, we depend on people like the Tri-County Radio Association members to communicate between emergency services. I mean, the county has our internal communication, but the radio people are able to really be in touch on a broad scale when there's an emergency. So we don't hear too much about them, but they perform an important service. So thanks, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
No comments, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chairwoman. The County Commissioners will host a Beyond the Bin Recycling Event on Saturday, November 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Union County College's Cranford Campus, that's 1033 Springfield Avenue in Lot 5A and Lot 5B. Residents are invited to bring acceptable items for proper recycling, including electronics, plastic film, clothing, textiles, reusable bags, food waste, styrofoam, mattresses properly wrapped, and pet items for donation. For the full list, please visit ucnj.org/recycling. If you have any questions, please call 908-654-9890. I also was able to attend this weekend the Seventh Annual Queen City Film Festival, which is hosted in the great city of Plainfield at three separate sites. There were a number... There were a number of wonderful films by independent filmmakers and awards gala evening, and I'm really glad that the Board of Commissioners continues to assist in sponsoring this event. It's grown bigger and bigger each year. It is now considered an international festival as films come in from all over the world. So it was a wonderful event, and I'm looking forward to the 8th Annual. So again, I want to thank my colleagues. Thanks to Lamar Maxson, who also serves as the Chairman of the Union County Motion Picture and Television Advisory Commission. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chairwoman. We are excited to announce that our annual paving projects have been completed ahead of schedule. In previous years, some of these projects extended into March or April due to delays or weather, but this year, we finished early. Thanks to exceptional work of our dedicated team, I'd like to give a special thank you to Joseph Polakay, Director of the Department of Public Works, and Ricardo Mathias, our Canon Engineer, for overseeing the technical aspects of these projects. Your hard work and commitment, along with the incredible efforts of the entire Public Works team, have paved over 14.6 miles of roads this year alone, well before the winter months set in. This success ensures smoother, safer travel throughout the county and helps minimize disruptions to residents by keeping closures and traffic delays to a minimum. We are proud to continue improving Union County's infrastructure and making commutes and travel more efficient for everyone. Thank you to our residents for your patience and support throughout these projects. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. County Council Bruce Bergen.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing tonight.
County Manager Ed Oatman.
No counsel. No counsel, Chair.
Vice Chairwoman Lourdes Leon.
Thank you, Chair. The Union County Immunization Clinic is offering extended hours for free flu vaccines to help protect our community as flu cases continue to rise. We encourage all residents to take advantage of these additional opportunities to get vaccinated. The extended clinic hours are the following dates, November 1st, November 15th, and November 25th. The clinic will be open from 4:30 to 7:30 at 40 Parker Road in Elizabeth, located on the basement level. This service is available to uninsured, underinsured, or Medicaid Plan A residents of Union County. If you need further information, please call 908-965-3868, or email uclinic@ucnj.org. Thank you. That'll be all for me tonight. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you. This morning, I had the honor of being recognized along County Manager Ed Oatman at the Retesh Shaw Charitable Pharmacy's National Pharmacy Week breakfast. I know that Ed and I both were very honored to receive the 2024 Morder and Pestle Award, which highlights the impactful partnership we've built with Trinitas Regional Medical Center, RWJ Barnabas Health, and the Retesh Shaw Charitable Pharmacy. Through this collaboration, we've been able to provide essential medications free of charge to residents living within 300% of the federal poverty level. In just over a year that this partnership has taken place, we've served dozens of residents, we've dispensed over 700 prescriptions, refilling hundreds more and saving patients over $117,000. It's a ton of money, and the lives changed is even more impactful and significant. We had residents right here in Union County that had to choose between filling a prescription for medication or buying food for their children, and now, because of this partnership, we, they don't have to worry about that any longer. And if you were at our meeting last year, I believe it was last year when we had Retesh here, he is just one of the most remarkable people I've ever met, and I know that we had Amy, Dennis Burke, and Jimmy join us this morning, Laura, and it was just a beautiful morning. It was so positive, and really, his kindness, I think, inspires everyone to want to be better people. So it was really, really nice morning, very humbled to have received that. So I want to thank him, and we definitely look forward to future partnerships with the Retesh Shaw Charitable Pharmacy. As our Commissioners talked about, four centuries in a weekend, this weekend, it was a lot of fun, my daughter enjoyed, and they let her stamp her own passport quite a few times, so she was very excited to do that. I had to keep the stamp away from her then, because that's permanent ink all over. We also, I'm really excited that we have launched our second cohort of the Stories of a Lifetime program with the UC PAC. We have another nice-sized cohort, and this time, there are some men in the group, so I'm really looking forward to them gaining a lot from the program, but then also hearing from their stories in the upcoming weeks. I see our prosecutor here, and I know, I just want to highlight the Union County Child Advocacy Run for Children, which took place this weekend. I could not get there, but I know that we had a phenomenal turnout. There were over 200 runners and walkers, and great support for a great cause. So thank you, Prosecutor, for all you do for our community, and I will be there next year. And I think with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is over.